Are we ready to go?
We're ready to go, Mayor.
Okay, you call the roll.
Okay, Commissioner Goldman. You're muted, Commissioner.
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
All members present, sir.
Excellent, okay. I will lead us in the pledge tonight to make it simple. Right hand over your heart. We don't have a flag on the screen, but we're gonna, we're gonna pretend we do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And our own city manager is gonna do the invocation tonight, so.
Is my, is my sound on?
Your sound is on. We kicked out the rabbis, we kicked out the priest, and we kicked out the chief just for you, Chris.
Okay, thank you. My once every five years.
There you go.
Okay, dear Lord, the eternal God, as we are assembled virtually today, we ask for your protection over our community throughout this pandemic and hurricane season. We know that all the elements of nature obey your commands. Protect us and all your people during this season of deadly viruses and storms and hurricanes. Calm our fears and help us to prepare our hearts as well as our safety personally and as a community. Help us to see you in all we may encounter and help us to meet the needs of others in our community. We also ask that you protect our law enforcement and first responders and our military. We are truly grateful for all they do each day to ensure our safety and well-being. And let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. You've got a next career as the man of the cloth, so. Okay, with that, everybody, Mauricio, I saw that we were deferring minutes. Do we have any minutes to approve?
No, not tonight, Mayor. I'm respectfully requesting to defer the minutes to the next meeting.
Okay, okay, excellent. So I'm gonna read my opening statement and then say a few words and then we're gonna.
Can I just have a motion to defer the minutes?
Okay, could I have a motion to defer the minutes, please? Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the minutes are deferred. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna read my opening statement and then say a few words and we're gonna jump into it. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. Please ensure that your microphone is muted to avoid interrupting the proceedings tonight. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to use the raise hand function, which can be located by these following steps. If you're using an iPad, tap the center of your screen, tap on the three dots located at the top right-hand corner, and then select raise hand. If you're using a desktop, click on the participants button on the bottom of your screen, which opens a side window listing all the participants. And on the participant screen, click on the three dots located on the bottom left-hand corner and select raise hand. If you called in and are listening on your phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, and the city clerk will call you, call on you based on the last four digits of your phone number. So we've got a lot of ways to participate. When called upon, please state your name and address for the record. And speakers may also use the chat function to submit their comments and questions. These chats are only available to the commission, and the host or chair will read it into the record. The chat function is located at the bottom of the screen. Please make sure to type in your name and address for the record when you're chatting as well. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you don't adhere to the chair's advice, your microphone will be shut off. There are changes to tonight's agenda. We just deferred the approval of the minutes, item 3A of the September 17th Commission meeting. Item 5B, we're going to defer, which is a proclamation regarding LGBTQ month, and we're gonna defer item 5C, which is a proclamation regarding emotional wellness month. And we have three add-on items, 10K, 10L, and 10M, which is awarding a landscaping bid. And I'm gonna move up item 10I, out of order, the kids' side donation, so we can let Judge Scott Bernstein go home early tonight. We have a motion to accept these changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, excellent. Okay, before we get started, I wanna say just a couple of words. I missed the last meeting because I thought I had COVID. I had to travel. I had to travel to the Midwest. And, you know, on the plane, I had a rapper sitting next to me and a rabbi sitting in front of me for a three-hour flight. So I got off the plane and I was, I was a nervous wreck, but in any case. I, when I got back the following day, which was the day of the commission meeting, you know, I got fever, I got body aches and everything else. And ironically, I just caught the flu. I didn't have COVID. But I bring it up because we are going through a resurgence of COVID. Not like the July-August timeframe, but, but a little bit more like, but, but it is, it's definitely happening. I can see it in the blood center numbers where our, you know, our convalescent plasma shipments are up about 20% after they kind of leveled off. They were up way high in July-August, they leveled off, and now they're up about 20% from about three weeks ago. That's a little bit of a trailing indicator because, because it shows folks that are in the hospital, but it's, but it's happening. And, you know, it makes sense because it's happening globally and it's happening across the US. You know, as we open up, obviously, people are letting their guard down, and they're not being quite as vigilant, but there are also just a lot more public contact. Europe is going through a resurgence. The Netherlands, France, Spain, England, they're having, actually, it's probably, it's probably happening worse than it's happening here at this point. So, and, you know, as the weather gets colder as well, which isn't as big an issue for South Florida, but as the weather gets colder, people spend more time indoors, which then has a tendency to wanna make the virus, you know, you know, run, run more. So I just bring it up again. I've said it many times. The virus doesn't go away because we're bored or we want it to go away, you know, fortunately or unfortunately. The virus basically is gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, get a vaccine, get some more therapies, and deal with it. So I just, you know, I know it's been a long road for everybody. I think everybody's tired of wearing a mask. I think everybody's tired of, you know, of adhering to a lot of the things that we have to do. But the only reason why we're not in a situation today like we're in in July and August is because people are wearing masks, social distancing, and basically, you know, watching themselves. So I would just encourage everyone, continue to wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, you know, all the things that we know basically work. And they do work, by the way. I mean, you know, it's, I believe that we've kept our numbers in check because people are paying attention, not because we're lucky and not because it's going away. It's not going away, you know, just to be clear. So, so that's, you know, I just, again, you know, I've got a vantage point from my blood center activities and, you know, I always like to let everybody know kind of at least what I'm seeing. And I think, I think I've got very good data. That's the bottom line. So I'm very comfortable making the statements that I make, you know, based on the information that I, that I have and I see. So with that, you know, obviously, if anybody ever has any questions, you know, feel free to write me or call me. So I'm gonna, we moved up item 10I, and that is Judge Scott Bernstein has got a resolution regarding KidSafe, which is a non-for-profit that supports Family Court Services. So, Chris, do you wanna lead in or do we just hand it over to the judge?
Hold on, Mayor, let me just read the title of the resolution.
Okay, Mauricio, that's right, that's right. You read it in the record.
Okay, 10I is resolution authorizing the payment of a cash donation in the amount of $7,500 to KidSide Inc., a non-for-profit organization that supports family court services which provide services to city residents.
I'll defer my time. I'll defer my time.
Commissioner Viscara. Right, right, I'm sorry. All right, Jennifer, this is all yours.
Okay, thank you. Well, as you all, I imagine, know, and a lot of people know, I, I work in the family world, both as an attorney, as a mediator, and a guardian at Lightem. And in that role, I, I've come to know the work of Family Court Services, which Judge Bernstein can speak more specifically about their role and how unique it is. And as I dug a little deeper, I saw that, you know, there were some of our residents, a good, a substantially enough number of our residents using those services. Those services are generally, it's, it's for the lower-income people who can't afford the therapies and, and other services that you would otherwise be able to get if you, if you have the money and/or health insurance that can cover these, these services that you might need to get through your conflict in family. But if you don't and you get referred to Family Court Services, there, you might have a, a long wait, even though it's, it's free of charge for the people who use it. And that long wait has its, its consequences. And I think, you know, I'll, I'll defer to Judge Bernstein so he can speak more about that, and then I can chime in if needed.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commissioner Viscara, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the other commissioners. I'm really grateful that you've taken up this issue tonight. I am Scott Bernstein, and I am the administrative judge of the Family Court in Miami-Dade County. And I'm incredibly proud of Family Court Services. We are the only family court in the United States that has an in-house unit providing services for the indigent in our community. We provide supervised visitation, therapeutic visitation, co-parenting counseling, crisis assistance, help with time sharing. All of these services are provided free of charge. The need is huge, and the available resources to pay for them is minuscule. So several years ago, we developed a 501(c)(3) to raise money to pay for salaries for more people to work at our in-house unit. I think you all know judges aren't allowed to raise money or ask for money. So that's not what I'm doing tonight, but I do wanna tell you about KidSide. That's the 501(c)(3) that we set up. They, this organization is made up primarily of lawyers, mental health professionals, accounting professionals, and real estate professionals around Miami-Dade County to help support the work of Family Court Services. And without KidSide's additional funding, the wait lists would be huge. So for example, if there's a domestic violence case or if there's a case with some kind of interpersonal violence, and it's not safe necessarily for a parent to have time sharing with their child, we also know it's not good for the child to go without seeing mom or dad, so we have supervised visitation in place. And it's not good if you have to wait six, seven weeks, eight weeks to be able to see a parent, particularly for a very young child. So we need these extra employees at Family Court Services to, to meet that need. And also, if we don't have these services in place, then what's happening in the community is people are turning to the municipal police to try to solve their problems. So this serves several different functions. It takes problems away from the police, who are generally overburdened and overworked anyway, and gets them into the mental health arena where they really need the work. So I'm incredibly proud of, of this organization and the people who have worked on it. Do any of you have any questions about the work that KidSide does that I can answer for you?
I think it's great, and I think we're happy to support it, so.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna let you know, in line with your comments, since mid-March, our entire service has turned virtual. And while we're not doing these services in person the way we are, we're still doing them. We're still having meetings, doing supervised visitation, doing the therapeutic services. Every single day, we're just using a platform like Zoom to do them. Because we're also very.
Right, that's fantastic.
Safe to do the way you are.
I just have one comment.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Send my regards to David.
He asked me to say the same thing to you.
So happy to see so, the vital work that you're.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
And just to be clear, I'm the one asking for the donation, not, not Judge Bernstein. I'm the one bringing it to the commission.
And I'm grateful, Commissioner Viscara.
Yes. Thank you for talking.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Judge Bernstein, and thank you, Commissioner Viscara, for bringing this up. I think that many people often forget that we do have people in our community that really need these services. I recently just got my first case as a volunteer guardian at Lightem. Not through our community, but a different community, and this is so important for so many of our families. And the fact that we're participating is just, is just wonderful. So, so thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Judge.
Bless you for also doing that work, which is vitally important, so thank you.
Okay, with that, could I have a motion to approve?
Before we, we have the motion, I have someone that wants to speak.
Okay.
Uh, one second. Jody Joseph, your name and address for the record, please.
He's on mute. There he is.
No.
You're on mute?
No, I'm muted.
Check over there. Okay.
Now we can hear him now.
I was just wondering, how is this, my name is Jody Joseph, I said that already. I live down North Bay Road, and, and my question is, is this, does this have any affiliation with the foster children? Or do these all have parents who are going through difficult times? Yeah?
Yes. Kids in foster care are in our dependency system, which is a different courthouse and a different, different system. These are all kids who are going through custody battles with their parents. It's a different category of cases. For the foster care kids, the Department of Children and Families pays for those services.
Yeah, we just took the citrus, we just took the full course and we got fingerprinted. And we're good at fostering. It's just, donate, I mean, it's a soft spot with us for, you know, any kid going through anything is heartbreaking, but to go through something without parents is.
Horrible, it's horrible.
Terrible.
I was a judge for many years in that court as well, but, you know, it's, it's, it's awful to see what, what happens to these children. And that's why we work so hard to try to get them the needed mental health treatment.
Great. Thank you, Jody. Okay, Mauricio, any other comments?
None, Mayor.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Hello.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay. Judge, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. You too. Take care. Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, we'll move on to special presentations and item 5A, the Florida Municipal Achievement Award.
Yes, Mayor, this will be presented by Schwanda Barnett. She's the ambassador for the Florida League of Cities. If you just give me one second, I will bring her up.
Sure.
Schwanda, are you there?
I am. Just one moment. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Shaw, Commissioners, Managers, City Clerk, Attorneys, Staff, and Residents. My name is Schwanda Barnett, Membership Relations Ambassador for the Florida League of Cities. It is an honor for me to be with you this evening to present the coveted Florida Municipal Achievement Award for City Spirit. The City Spirit Award recognizes a specific citywide effort that successfully addresses a local need. The city of Sunny Isles Beach-winning entry was a pedestrian safety strategy, which included several transportation and constructive, construction initiatives aimed at improving pedestrian safety while connecting residential, commercial, and recreational areas within the city. The initiatives were created in response to residents' needs which were identified through a series of town hall meetings and input from the city's fact-finding committee and the commission. The plan aligns with the city's vision that focuses on promoting quality-of-life and quality-of-place initiatives, prioritizing the safety of the community. Your city has received positive feedback from residents and seen tremendous success with this strategy. You are a great example of collaboration in action. The Florida Municipal Achievement Awards have recognized innovation and excellence in local government programs for nearly a decade. It is the highest award that we give to Florida cities. Your nomination was excellent, and your efforts in including the voices and improving the lives of your residents through this program are outstanding. In addition to this award, as a winner, Sunny Isles Beach will be featured on the league's website, various social media outlets, and in our league's Quality City magazine. Normally, we'd be presenting this award in person, and your city would have been recognized in a video at our annual conference this past August, but our conference was canceled and truncated to a virtual business meeting due to COVID-19. However, we'd be remiss if we did not take the time out to formally congratulate your city on receiving this prestigious award. So where there's a will, there's a way, and this is my way of paying tribute to you on behalf of the Florida League of Cities. I am honored to present you with the 2020 Municipal Achievement Award for City Spirit. Congratulations to the beautiful city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you, Schwanda. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Any, absolutely. Any comments from the commission? Okay, this is great.
I just wanna thank Chris and his team for, for making it happen and to the staff who, who worked so hard to make this a reality.
I mean, this, this started, actually, you know, a number of years ago with the transportation master plan and all the outreach we had for that. And, you know, and a lot of money, the pedestrian bridges that we built over the canal, the, the efforts that the police department has put forward, the efforts that planning and zoning, and frankly, all our departments have been involved in this one way or the other. So it's, it's really been a group effort over the years, and as we know, it never ends when it comes to this type of issue in our city.
Absolutely. Okay, again, thank you very much, Schwanda. We appreciate the award and, you know, yep, and, and please, please, please let everyone at the league know that we, you know, that, that we greatly appreciate the recognition.
All right, make sure to look out for your article in Quality Cities.
Absolutely. Thanks again, Schwanda.
Thank you.
Okay, item 5B, Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
This is from Commissioner Viscara.
So this is a, this is to recognize October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This particular issue is especially personal for me because my mother passed away from breast cancer, and October happens to be her birthday. So it's my, my honor to, and, and privilege to, to present this proclamation to the city. And it's short, so I'll just read it into the record. It reads, and I'll, I need to do this. Whereas too many Americans are touched by the pain and hardship caused by breast cancer, a disease that among women is not only one of the most common concerns, but also one of the leading causes of cancer related to death. And whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, and while we have seen an increase in mammography rates and a decline in deaths, there is more we can do. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment, and whereas too many women do not utilize mammography as a regular, as, at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection to decrease death rates, and whereas the awareness campaign is sending out several key messages, most notably, the American Cancer Society continues to advise women to get annual mammogram screening once they reach age 40. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates in the United States more than 276,480 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year, and over 42,000 people will die. And whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach stands in solidarity with breast cancer survivors and reaffirms our commitment to raising awareness of this disease, and thank countless professionals, researchers, and caregivers who dedicate their lives to fighting for a world without breast cancer.
Very nice. Thank you.
I'd like to answer that. I'd like to answer that a little bit. As many people know in the city, I am a breast cancer survivor myself, and I'm so pleased that this is a continuation of efforts and coordination and this proclamation. And as many of you also know, there, a mammobus is gonna be here over the weekend and filled it up and another one to have 3D mammography here, so very excited about that. And I think we all see the effects of this, and very important to keep the awareness and of course, the importance of mammography. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 5C and item 5D have been deferred, so we're gonna go to item 5E.
And this is from Vice Mayor Sfetchen.
Thank you. So this is in recognition of the bilingual child. October happens to be a month that celebrates a lot of different causes, and I chose this one specifically, although I obviously applaud Commissioner Viscara with recognizing breast cancer. That's an important issue. All of us know somebody that, that has either fought it or unfortunately died of it. We live in a community that, as we all know, probably 99% of everyone that lives here speaks at least one other language. And this is a, most evident with, with our children. As you know, I, I work a lot with the school and, and, and seeing all these children who speak a different language, and in so many cases around the country, it's not recognized as something of value. I wanted to make sure that those, those families were recognized, and specifically those children who continue to, to learn a different language or keep the language of, of their parents, like my children who at least try to understand some Russian if they don't choose to speak it. But I'm going to read this. Whereas a person who is bilingual knows more than one language and is more capable of understanding multiple cultures, and children who speak and understand two or more languages act as a bridge between multiple cultures. And early language learning offers many benefits with studies showing that children who learn second languages perform better at solving complex problems and are more creative. And studies further show that bilingual children score higher on English standardized tests. And the most important benefit of being bilingual is the ability to understand and communicate with people of different cultures. And our children must be comfortable working and playing with people of other backgrounds and ethnicities in order to succeed. And the city of Sunny Isles Beach encourages the development, young people, in development, young people who are tolerant of other cultures and comfortable working in a diverse environment to build a better, stronger, and more unified community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, you know, given our community, we have a lot of bilingual children in our community, that's for sure. And it's not just Spanish and English, which is also interesting. Okay, that's it for the special presentations this evening. We're gonna go on to ordinances for first reading, and that will be item 7A.
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach ordered in chapter 260 of the Court of Ordinances entitled Water to provide the implementation of the water conservation rule for landscape irrigation of the South Florida Water Management District, providing for a landscape irrigation schedule by incorporation of chapter 40e-24 of the Florida Ministry of, providing for applicability, providing for variances, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, the South Florida Water Management District recently amended its rule with respect to landscape irrigation. They contacted us back in April, and Valerie worked closely with them to make sure that our ordinance mirrors their rule as they're requiring throughout the South Florida Water Management District, from Orlando all the way through the Keys. So this is just a, an ordinance to bring our code up to date with the current rule of the South Florida Water Management District.
Okay, any questions regarding the ordinance? Mauricio, any public speakers?
Not for this, Mayor.
No? Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Hello.
So we hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Mauricio?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be November 19.
Okay, do we have any ordinances for second reading? Not this time? Nope, okay. And so we will move on to resolutions, and that will be item 10A?
Yes, 10A is a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984 to expend forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice to purchase eight solar-powered traffic signs and field force equipment. And let me bring on Captain Grandinetti.
You gotta, he's on mute.
Captain, can you unmute yourself?
I see the chief is unmuted, but I don't see Mike. But Michael, Mike looks like he's muted. Uh, there he goes. Mike?
I believe the chief's on it. Is he presenting this? If not, I can do it.
He's on, but he's not speaking.
Mauricio, you there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here. Very good. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Again, this is a request to extend, expend forfeiture funds out of our DOJ forfeiture account in an amount not to exceed $155,000 for the purchase of field force equipment for the entire police department. Uh, as well as eight solar powered, fixed mounted speed control signs, uh, which is part of our traffic safety initiative, which will be placed in different places throughout the city strategically mounted. So, but these are fixed and they, they're going to give us all kind of data and, and be able to hopefully, um, you know, help us control our, our traffic issues.
Excellent. Any questions for the chief regarding, um, the forfeiture fund request?
I have a question.
Mauricio?
Chief, are any of those going to be placed in Golden Shores?
The eight that we're actually placing, that they're actually fixed, they're probably going to go along Collins Avenue and Sunny Isles Boulevard because those are most highly dense and traveled areas. But we still have the portable units that we can put in different areas. We can move those around and we can collect the same kind of data. But we won't necessarily have them, you know, fixed in, in different neighborhoods.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think those are great. Sorry.
Vice Mayor, are you volunteering your front yard for one of those portable signs?
No, I'm just, I, I, I can tell you that when those signs are out, they, they impact everyone. I mean, I, I will tell you, I, I will volunteer that I've never had a traffic speeding ticket. But I always look at that and I make sure that I am well within that number. And psychologically, they, they work. They really do. So I appreciate that we're finally getting those. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments for the chief?
Yeah, I, uh, I'm very happy that we're purchasing these, um, these traffic signs. Uh, I just wanted to know what the timeframe would be. When, when do we expect these to be installed?
Well, we're still working on the procurement part of it. Uh, obviously the first step is tonight to get it approved. And then we still have to go through the engineering part of it and the permitting part of it and, and stuff along those lines. So we're hoping they'll be up, uh, very soon. No, hopefully by the end of the year anyway.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate this.
Because these are permanent, right, chief? These are going to be permanent ones?
Yes, sir. They're going to be, they're going to be placed in the ground and.
Good. Good. So that'll free up the portable ones for the Vice Mayor's front yard. So, so that means that we'll be, yeah, exactly. There we go. Um, okay. Mauricio, any public comments?
Yes, we have one mayor. Um, one second.
Okay.
Jerry Joseph, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Chief. Jerry Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. We have a, um, stop sign on, um, North Bay Road and 185th Street that constantly is run. People are running that stop sign and speeding up North Bay Road back and forth. For the first time last evening, there was a, a police officer sitting at the property next door to me at 18550, uh, watching, uh, but that was, we'd like to, please, if you would have that, um, more often, I think that would be quite helpful.
I may add to that, you know, you could have all the signs. We have all signs, again, pardon me, we live in, um, uh, Golden Shores. We have do not stop, do not stand, and we have all the loading. I mean, massive 18-wheel trucks in our area, loading and unloading, um, all kinds of cars. No, but it's in here for the high rises across the street. And it's, we've been, the whole area has been complaining about this for years and we even show the drivers the signs. And you could have signs, but if nobody is going to do anything about it and police it, what good does it do us? Because we really have a problem in Golden Shores, especially on our street. You know, you have so many of the, um, what is it? Not bed and breakfast, the, um, uh, what, what are we doing here? The Airbnb's? And they rent their Porsches and their Ferraris. And I mean, they literally, they have races here. And there's, and we have signs, we have the stop signs and it hasn't helped us, quite honestly. So what do you think we can do about that, chief?
Well, we can certainly continue to patrol the area, but I can tell you that one of the most helpful things that we can, we can ask of our residents is when you see something, if you could call us. That way we get on it immediately and we, we can get there and we can resolve the issue as it's occurring. So that, that would be the biggest thing that I could tell you would help us the most. And obviously it's still part of our patrol duties to be in there and to be, to be looking for violations like that.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments in the public hearing, Mauricio?
No, Mayor, not for this item.
Okay. Um, I think I saw another hand just go up.
Okay, yes. Roomy, give me one second, Mayor. Sorry. Roomy, go ahead.
Yes, I have the question about the police because Saturday morning, Saturday morning, four o'clock, we wake up from the music behind our houses, which is from North Bay Road. And, uh, four o'clock, I called the police. And the lady, the girl told me, if you don't tell me exactly the number of the house, I'm not going to send the police over there. I said, ma'am, North Bay Road from 185th Street, there are three houses. When the police pass with open window, he's gonna hear. She made me, I have to go four o'clock to go to find out the number of the house, which I don't like it. This is not responsible.
Hi, good evening, Roomy. Um, this is the chief again. Listen, if you ever have a problem like that, when you call our police department and you're not satisfied with the answer you get, just ask to speak to a supervisor and I can assure you somebody will be going out there immediately.
Oh, thank you. Next time I will. But four o'clock Saturday morning. And she told me if you don't give me the exactly address, I will not send the police.
Well, I will. I will personally look into that, that call myself, just to make sure and find out exactly what happened. But like I said, in, in the future, if you're not satisfied with what, what they tell you, just ask to speak to a supervisor.
Thank you very much. I even told this, what happened Saturday, I told Larissa. And because I really, I have a sign to support the police, but I want really to support us.
Well, thank you for your support and you, you certainly do have our support.
I, I told Roomy to call Chris.
Thank you, Roomy.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Any more public comment, Mauricio? I think that's it.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, there's another one.
Okay, one more.
Just disappeared. Is that one? Well, I saw one pop up. I just saw it go away.
Yeah, it went away.
Okay, okay. Public hearings closed. Um, um, do I hear a motion for item 10A?
No move.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Motion carries. Chief, you were popped earlier today. Okay, let's go to item 10B.
Thank you.
Okay, 10B. 10B is a resolution extending the term for certificates of use set forth in section 121 dash 4A and business tax receipts set forth in section 187 dash 5A of the city's Code of Ordinances from September 30th and October 1st, 2020 respectively, until February 1st, 2021, suspending the imposition of delinquency penalties for failure to renew certificates of use and business tax receipts prior to February 1st, 2020.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Basically, this is to provide assistance to our local businesses. What we'll do is we are extending the deadline of their, uh, local business tax and certificate of use. So no penalties will be incurred if they have not paid. And as Mauricio has said, they will have until February 1st, 2021 to pay for this fiscal year licenses and taxes.
So this is basically a COVID accommodation?
Correct.
Understood. Okay, very good. Any questions?
I, I have a quick question.
Vice Mayor?
Claudia, actually, it's a little hard to hear you, Claudia, when you're speaking. Um.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, I think so. The, my question was, do the businesses, the small businesses who have the licenses, how, have they been informed? Do they have the extension? Do they know?
Uh, we have been working with the media team. Um, we actually had an emergency order prior to this resolution. So it was sent out already to, uh, the business community.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Um, any public comments, Mauricio?
None, Mayor.
None. Okay. With that, I'll take a motion?
No move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 10C. Thank you, Claudia.
10C is a resolution ratifying an agreement with Granicus LLC for short-term rental compliance monitoring and enforcement.
Mayor, Commissioners, um, this is, um, our contract with the company that we use to monitor the short-term rentals.
Uh, we are keeping the same rate of $49,995, um, for this coming year. We're currently monitoring 1,528 residential units that are actively advertising. It has been increased, uh, since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, and we have a rate of 50, almost 58% of fully identified units.
Excellent. Any questions for Claudia?
I have a question.
No? Okay. Any, any public comment, Mauricio?
I have a question.
Nope. Okay, I'm sorry. Jennifer?
No, Larissa had a question.
Larissa.
Oh, Larissa, I'm sorry.
Your, your, it's, your mic, you don't sound very loud, at least to me. So maybe you need to be closer or something.
Claudia, do we, do we have a, a number, uh, and, uh, and if we don't, that's fine, of how much the program i- is approximately costing us between this company a- and staffing?
Well, the, this contract is for, um, $49,000 per one year. And we currently have one full-time employee, which is under, uh, under that price that is devoted to this program. And of course, we have, um, code enforcement that, um, support us when we, we send these cases to them. So, um, the licenses that we collect, uh, from last year, they are kind of basically just breaking even with that full staff.
And so if we didn't have, um, this algorithm or this company use with their da- data, how would, how would it work? Would we have to hire more people? And I'm just, I just want to make sure, make sure it's clear to whomever is listening, what, what kind of benefit this program is versus hiring more people and, and, and how it helps their work?
From the experience that I had had with this kind of programs, I don't think so that you will be able to have enough, uh, employees scrolling and actually, um, searching for these hundreds of hundreds of websites where people actually advertise their units. So it will be a very hard task to do it manually, uh, manpowered. So that's why we enter into this contract with this type of companies, that they have those algori- algorithms. And they're able to, um, track all that information that is in the web.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's actually a really good deal.
Yep, Alex. Yeah, Claudia, can you go over some of the numbers you, you mentioned at the beginning? Uh, it wasn't too clear.
Sure.
I, I, yeah, the numbers that, of, of how many, uh, units we're monitoring, et cetera. I couldn't hear that too well.
Sure. We currently, um, based off from the latest report from this company, there are 1,500 and 1,528 units currently and actively advertising. Those multiply by multiple, multiple advertisements. So one of those units can have literally hundreds of advertisements out there.
Okay, okay. And have we, with, with this program, have we been getting or do we have a line of communication with some of these condo associations in order to kind of mitigate, uh, the short-term rental issues?
We have constant, constant communication with the condo associations, correct.
And have we seen, I mean, have we seen, you know, good cooperation from the associations?
Some of them, yes, with some other ones.
No, no, I'm sure, I'm sure. No, I'm just trying to see the, you know, point of comparison to see when we start this program, to see if there's been some sort of, you know, uh, visible change and, uh.
Oh, he froze.
We lost you, Alex. Yeah, yeah, we lost Alex. Claudia, how many, how many business licenses are, have, are, are valid for short-term rentals in the city?
For this fiscal year, we're close to 500.
Okay, so arguably of the 1,000, 1,500 that you've identified, 500 should be legal.
Correct.
And 1,000 would be illegal. That's kind of the acid test for me. Yeah, yeah. So it's like a one, it's a one in three ratio. Yeah. Yeah. We, we, we lost you for a minute there, Alex. You, you locked up for one minute.
Yeah, I just got connected again. Yeah, my, uh, my wifi is kind of, uh, you know, a little bit faulty, to say the least.
No worries. Okay. Um, any other public, or any other comments from the commission? Okay. Mauricio, we have a public speaker. Okay, Dana?
I have a comment. So how do we get, I mean, see, we've talked about this internally about we have a lower, lower ratio or lower rate of registrations this year. So arguably some of it is attributable to, to COVID, but how do we, how do we get that, that registration up? Or can we do anything? We're just going to come down on the ones that are not registered? Or what, how are we, how are we addressing this really low, low registration?
Identify and fine.
Exactly. That's, that's what we start right now. We had just finalized the first phase, I will call it, of the renewal. Uh, our next step will be to send a letter, uh, a courtesy letter, um, for the ones that are operating without a license. And eventually then in December, we will again send those cases to code enforcement for, for basically receiving a fine for those who are fully identified.
So everything is in process, basically. It's all in queue. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Mauricio will open up the public speakers. Chief?
We have one speaker, Mayor. One second. Jerry Joseph, go ahead.
Hi, um, Jody Joseph again from, uh, 18560 North Bay Road. Just of course regarding a subject, I found a, three sheets of paper in my front lawn, interesting enough. And I was reading it. I'll keep it short. There's a, I'm not quite understanding. If you could, um, put some clarity on this. It again is regarding exactly what we're speaking about. And it says that no more than four stay registrations will be approved within the year and violators of city code chapter 217 rental property will be cited and summonses in the amount of $1,000 a day for the first violation and 2,500 per day for the second violation. Now, I'm just a little confused. No more than four for the year.
That's if they register.
Excuse me.
No, and that's single family homes. That's, that's single, go ahead, Claudia. That's single family homes, Jody.
No, I understand that, but my question is, is that for, at two weeks? At a time? Are they allowed to stay for, for three months at a time, making it a full year? Isn't there any limit on that?
There is limitation, my correct. There is not limitation on the timeframe.
I can hardly hear you.
There, there is not limitation on the time that they can spend. It can be for weekends or it can be for months. There is not limitation.
So, so Jody, just to be clear, so years ago, and I, I think I put this forth about probably 10 or 12 years ago, we had an issue on our island where they were renting houses out for parties on the weekend. Okay? And, you know, just like they were doing in, probably in your neighborhood over the years. So what we decided was, was if you're a single family homeowner, you can rent your, you, you can rent your house out four times a year. A day, a month, six months. But basically we felt four times a year, you know, gave you flexibility if you wanted to do something with your home. And that's why we capped it at four times a year. So that's what that, that's what that means. This was done probably, I don't know, 12 years ago, 10, 12 years ago. And so again, when you, when you rent your home or when you, you have to register. So if you have a, if you have a third party come in or, you know, or like the crazy weekend or whatever, and you don't register, you're subject to getting, you know, you know, to getting cited.
How, if I may ask, how many people, because I know in our area, it's absolutely out of control. Um, how many people have been cited so far, if I may ask, Claudia? If you have. How many people have been cited so far, if I may ask, Claudia? If you have any to do that?
Sure, I can provide those records later on. I don't have it in front of me, but definitely, we can search for that. So I, I can contact you tomorrow.
Because we have, there's homes like right, two homes away, three homes away, where I could guarantee you, you could tell by the cars, you could tell by the people, you could tell by the dogs.
Really simple, Jody. Just call code enforcement.
Oh, bud, we've been doing that forever and ever, and what they say is that they can't do anything, and Shane's wonderful. But Shane's only one person, and what they say is without proof, they really can't do anything. So my point is, if I'm able to say, hey, guys, listen, there's, there's different cars, there's different license plates, you see people with different dogs, you know they're causing, you know, loud parties, we have to have more. If we're not, just like the signs, if we're not reinforcing all these wonderful meetings and all the time that we put into all this, what good is it if nothing is being done? Because it's crazy here. You may not, it may be more peaceful where you are, bud, but our area, I can tell you, is out of control.
This, this is exactly why we have this resolution, because we can have these companies that hopefully are able to identify those advertising, and we will have a proof that they're advertising their properties.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Jody. Public hearing is closed.
Hey, I'm sorry, we have just one more comment that came in through the chat.
Sure, go ahead.
Address is 250 Sunny Hills Boulevard. And his question is, can you explain what the goal of the program is?
The goal of the program, basically, is to regulate, since we worked, we had a preemption from the state regarding how properties can be rented in short period of times. So basically, the program regulates those properties that are being rented for a short period of times, whether they're called out there as Airbnbs. So if you want to put your apartment for rental for the summer or for a weekend, you will have to be registered with the city in order to do so.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion for item 10C?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I can.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, item 10D.
10D is a resolution ratifying change order numbers two and three, and approving change order number four to the agreement with Temple Inc. for additional enhancements to the rectangular rapid flashing beacon assembly products.
Chris?
Susan.
Susan, sorry, Susan. Susan, good to see you.
This is the crosswalk, the lighted crosswalk that we have at 172nd Street, North Bay Road, that you approved quite some time ago. We had an issue with connecting it wired, so this is to use a solar power panel for the north crosswalk.
Understood. Any questions regarding the solar power panel for the crosswalk? Okay, any public hearing? Dana?
Go solar.
Go solar. Yep, absolutely.
I just wanted to comment, not necessarily a question on the issue, but that those crosswalks are wonderful. Like, we, and we do want them working. They've been, they've really been, you know, a significant improvement for us there, so.
I think people are also finally realizing they're supposed to stop. You know, there was a while there where folks don't get it. You know, they, and I think finally, they got them along Biscayne Boulevard now, other parts of the beach. I think it's finally getting into the public consciousness that you have to stop when you see a light flashing.
At night, it's, it's not very visible in that particular turn. So, I mean, no, it's, it's a fantastic thing to have.
Good. Okay, any public speaker, Mauricio?
Not for this, Mayor.
Being none? Okay, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion for item 10D?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item 10E.
10E is a resolution adopting the public arts program and strategic plan as recommended by the Public Arts Advisory Committee. And this is from Lynn. Give me one second, Mayor, and I will bring her up. Lynn, go ahead.
You're on mute, Lynn. There you are. Bottom left, bottom left of the screen, and you'll be off mute.
Got it.
There it is.
Hear me?
You got it.
Okay.
Good job.
Everybody. Yeah, especially for a dinosaur, right? The PAC unanimously is recommending the public's art program. It not only puts forth the processes and procedures that we need for acquiring art, deaccessioning art, maintaining art, and so forth, it also provides a basis upon which we can secure grants and other funding for future acquisitions. I just point out that there's a map. I'm sure you all read all 97 pages. There's a map on Appendix B of creative zones, which represent opportunities in the future for public art. And the last thing I would point out is there is, in addition to being a strategic plan, there's a work plan, especially a five-year work plan, where the PAC has chosen five different projects to be working on, and it will be updated as we go along. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Lynn?
I just have a comment. Jennifer, you go.
I just, I just wanted to ask Lynn, if the, I'm assuming, you know, in these projects, we're going to include that, like, multisensory experience and other opportunities for people on, on the autism spectrum, or children with special needs?
Yes, Hugh and I have talked about this, and in the future parks projects, we're looking at creative and artistic playground equipment. And if you don't mind, because of your request, and I've added a line to page 57, which I would appreciate a motion on when you adopt, assuming you adopt, and that will be, attention will be given to special needs children. This is on page 57.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, this committee just continues to work harder and harder, and really impressed me every time I speak to them. Their commitment is really unprecedented. It's wonderful. And Lynn, everything that you do with them.
Yeah. We lost to Larissa.
Lost sound.
Yeah, we lost your sound. Yeah, just barely. So we lost your sound.
Good.
Good, you're back. Okay, very good. And, and I echo that. You know, we've had a lot of different committees in the city over the years, and this one's just worked, the whole notion of it, you know, you know, not the least of which is your efforts, Lynn. So we appreciate, you know, all, all your hard work, and the committee's hard work, and just keeps churning out good stuff. And this is an area where I never thought we had the expertise to, to make, to make a lot of the judgments we were making, you know. You know, you know, I'm at the Blood Center. A lot of times, I say, my opinion doesn't matter on this subject sometimes. And, you know, when it came to, to the PAC, you know, pre-PAC, I always felt like we were making a lot of judgment calls that, that we really didn't have the expertise to make. And now, I really feel, you know, when we do these things, I feel very comfortable. You know, we've got experts behind it, a lot of thought, and a lot of conviction. So, very good. Thank you.
This committee is stellar. Thank you.
It is, it is, it is. They're great, they're great. And just please, again, convey that we appreciate the hard work. Mauricio, any public comments on this one?
No, Mayor, not for this.
Okay, with that, I will take a, a motion for item with Lynn's addition of the autistic children language on page 57. Item 10E.
So moved.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Motion carries. Very good. Okay, thank you, Lynn. Item 10F.
10F is a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sunny Hills Beach and Dade County Police Benevolent Association.
We have a contract.
Yes, it's been, it's been, yeah, it's been a while coming. Obviously, we were held up by a lot of things, not the least of which being the COVID pandemic. But, but everyone's worked and, and, you know, finally came together with it. It was very amicable, as usual. The team, both within our police department that represent the sworn officers and the union representatives, it's just, you know, it was a very good working relationship. I'm just going to mention the topics that were, that were addressed. The Commission has a full copy of the, the new contract and the pay plan. We had to amend our grievance procedure to add an arbitration clause that's required by law. We, for the first time in many years, updated our off-duty rates for the police officers. And that's where they're doing lane closures and things that the private sector, whether it's construction projects or developments, they pay the full freight when you see a police car out there, from benefits to hourly rates and pension and everything. So we updated that. We came up with an additional incentive, partial health insurance stipend into retirement. If you may recall, some of you who were here, I think it was at least three years ago, it may have been four now, where we entered into a stipend for 20-year officers. It has been very difficult to get officers to, qualified officers coming out of the academy these days. And one of the things that we were very successful with early on with the city was getting seasoned police officers to transfer in from other departments. This is an incentive for those that may have 10 years of experience in another department to consider transferring into ours. So that's spelled out in, in the, in the contract, Article 25. Article 26 was just clarifying procedure for promotions. It's actually bringing our language into conformance with our, our practice. Similar is Article 28. We made some upgrades of the drug-free workplace policy that was in the contract to make it consistent with the city personnel policies. We also added a entirely new clause, which requires periodic physical examinations of police officers. To, one, to make sure they're healthy and safe and able to do their job is the, is the main reasons for it, which most departments have these days. And last and not least was the compensation plan, that we do a salary survey every two years. This year, we decided to remove Hallendale from our list. We have four, we have three, which I think is our most comparable departments that we take the averaging from. And that includes Aventura, Bell Harbor, and Surfside. I'd just like to, just a word of thanks to our, our representatives in our department that represent, you know, the manpower that is in the union. And it just was a very, you know, very amicable, very successful, very open. And, you know, we lay everything on the table, and we're closely with them. We've got Sergeant Ethane Ju, Sergeant Javier, Javier, as I like to call him, and, and the whole crew. It's just been very, very positive.
So the one thing I'd say is, the, the years that I was involved with, you know, assisting in the union negotiation, you know, I think our force knows we care deeply about them. The community cares deeply about them. And the union understands that, quite frankly. So I've never felt like, I've never felt we've been at odds with the union. You know, and, and I think that it's been, it's always been a great process. But I can tell you, you know, the word "defund the police" will never come up in this city. On the contrary. I think we try to give them as much support as we can give them. I think everybody knows that. And, you know, clearly, clearly, it's a symbiotic relationship, you know, you know, with our union and with our officers. So, so again, you know, I, I said many times, you know, one of the, one of the greatest things to come out of incorporation of the City of Sunny Hills Beach has been our, our law enforcement. And so I want to thank, I want to thank the, you know, the union representatives, the union, and, and the, and the entire force. So, thank you very much. Any other comments?
I have a question. Here. Chris, I don't know if this is for you or for the chief. And again, this is just for clarification for people that are listening, because I've had this question many times, where people say to me, why is there a police car standing there by the lane closure? Why aren't they pulling people over? Why aren't they, you know, chasing people who are speeding? So can we just get clarification for the public when they're off-duty and working the, the lane closure? What that means, what their duty is to the city?
Well, their duty is... And also, we're not paying for it. Yeah.
Right, that's true. But you will, you will always see the car at the tail end of whatever activity is going on. And that, that is the key to, to the safety there, is that that car stay manned. Because number one, and certainly, we don't wish this ever to happen, and I can't recall if it has, I can't remember any if it has, that car is there for protection. There's people working in that lane, one way or the other, either loading or unloading or working right in that lane of traffic, and that car, with its lights on, are, are for safety. It's for life safety of the people working, or people driving a car who, as we know, distraction is the biggest issue and cause of accidents in our, in our city that relate to vehicles. That's been, you know, proven many times over. But, but no, they, they can't move, they're not. They're working what we call the off-duty, private jobs, when you see a car there on a lane closure. And it has to be on every lane closure, whether it's a city project, a developer's project, another utility that could also be a governmental entity. It's all required. And occasionally, because we don't have enough to go around sometimes, or officers that are available, you will either see one of our neighboring communities, you'll see the Florida Highway Patrol, and you might see, you know, some others. You might see Miami-Dade County. And that's the reason that they might see other police agencies in the city doing that.
Proven.
Good point, Vice Mayor. Very good point. Any other comments before we go to the public? Okay, Mauricio?
Comment, Mayor, but it's more geared towards the citizens' forum portion of the meeting. So I'll just wait.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. So, public hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion for item 10F? To ratify the PBA contract. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. We have an agreement. Thank you, Chris. Item 10G.
10G is a resolution approving the Seventh Amendment to the agreement with HPF Associates, Inc. to provide professional consulting services.
This renewal of Paul Abbott's contract for another year. And you'll be seeing a few more of those to get through with the undergrounding on Collins and then Golden Shores.
Okay, everybody knows Paul. Any, any questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So, Chris, just for clarification again, because when we spoke, and I saw this huge number, I thought, are we, you know, really? So just to clarify, this is the total contract since 2014?
That's correct.
Correct, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? Okay, Mauricio, public hearing?
Yes, we have one, Mayor. Jerry Joseph, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Jerry Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. So if you could clarify, please, what is the time schedule actually for Golden Shores, for North Bay Road?
Paul, do you want to get a few words in while you're here?
If I can keep my grandchildren quiet, it'll work. Yes, I'm glad to have this opportunity. I wanted to let everyone know, the Golden Shore Street Lighting Project has been advertised and released for the bidding procedure effective this week. With Mauricio's help, and Genesis and the purchasing department, we are out to bid. We expect, we are having a pre-bid meeting on the 27th, mandatory pre-bid. All bidders that are interested in our street lighting project for Golden Shores must attend. If they don't attend, they don't get to bid. We are going to receive it on the 11th, excuse me, the 10th of November, with the intention, having them reviewed, having legal look at them, and be able to come to commission on the 19th with a recommendation to award. We would like to start the street lighting project before the end of this calendar year in Golden Shores. We would like to start the street lighting project before the end of this calendar year in Golden Shores. Now, don't be confused, this is not the undergrounding project. We are moving the street lighting project ahead of the undergrounding. Kind of just the opposite of what we did on Collins to be able to get what what now is 46 streetlights in the entire Golden Shores neighborhood. We are going to have 131 when we're done.
Yeah, it's very dark.
Yeah, it's very dark, we really need it unsafe.
That's why we're doing it, thank you. Okay, Mauricio, you, thank you.
Yes.
Mauricio, you have another?
Remy, go ahead.
Yes, I want to ask approximately, I know that's for many years. But when is gonna start the underground? Now I hear for the this, until the end of the year. But for underground, for Golden Shores, when is gonna be? Start to see the really starts.
We, we understand, Remy, Paul?
We are in the process, we had a conference call meeting today with three of the four utility providers for Golden Shores. We are planning to be out to bid for that project no later than February of next year. We will have a longer bidding period because of the complexity of an undergrounding project that I would like to be to commission with a recommendation and able to proceed by the end of the first quarter of, uh I'm sorry, I'm sorry. By, we would like to have the bids in and ready for award by the end of the first quarter and be under construction in the second quarter of 2021.
Oh, thank you.
So mid next year, Remy, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Remy. Mauricio, that's it?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, public hearing's closed, do I hear a resolution on item 10G?
A motion?
Um a motion, not a resolution. I'm getting old, motion, do I hear a second? Second, second by Alex, all in favor? Aye. I guess we're gonna be seeing your smiling face a little longer, Paul, so. That's right, thank you, Paul, all right, thanks for all the hard work too, we appreciate it. Okay, item 10H.
10H is a resolution approving change order number 29 relating to the agreement with Roll Global Networks LP for the Collins Avenue Utilities Undergrounding Project.
Okay, so this change order of $889,000 is primarily related to all the complications of the streetlights. As you know, we started out thinking we were gonna have, um we could count on one hand percentage of these complicated spread footers. I think at this point, we're about at seven, probably 65, 70% of them are spread footers. So it's um, it it it's a substantial part of it. But you know, we've had a number, uh we've had a sub- substantial number of additional streetlights. If you recall, the first triple R, that was the the extent of the program, did not include the very north end and all the streetlights. And we had a few at the south end that we had to uh either replace and add. So um and I could go on with the whole um additional work that had to be done. We had some uh, some of our conduits were violated, so to speak. Not sure from what, maybe other utilities that got away with something. But we've had to go back and do quite a bit of additional work, which was a, a, it, most of it, like I said, related to the addition, which we had explained, uh you know, previously of the footers.
So Chris, so Chris and I spoke the other day, and I got a little update on this. So Chris, the acid test is, how many streetlights total? How many are done? How many to go?
So Paul, we got about 100, um 100 in, if I'm, if I got, if I got that right.
The revised number of streetlights now is 161, including the full scope from the northern boundary to the southern boundary.
Total number ultimately.
Collins. It started at just over 100 with the initial F dot project. We currently have 102 lights actually lit. There are a few more, about nine that are installed, but we don't have the circuitry to them yet. Assuming that FPL will meet their commitment and have the overhead lines de-energized on what they call Phase One, which is 163rd South to Hollow Beach, we will be able to add another 21 lights before the end of um this month. Yeah, they, the foundations are in, the conduit's in, the wires in, the service points are in, it's a matter of installing. We did meet a milestone yesterday, Chris alluded to it earlier, these spread footings have been a nightmare. Redesigned uh innumerable times because of new complications found. We placed the last spread footing yesterday, so we're done with spread footing. We are now 100% dependent upon the utility companies, essentially FPL, de-energizing their overhead lines. They don't have to remove them, if they just take the service off of those overhead lines. Our problem is a clearance issue. We cannot install the lights within OSHA standards while the overhead lines are energized. Once they're installed, we have adequate clearance. So we've been working with FPL to try and come up with some different strategies, possibly taking out brief outages of properties uh to allow us, we can set up probably three lights a night once the foundation conduit and wiring is all in. So we're struggling to make it all happen. It it's, we we are, we now are totally dependent upon FPNO.
Okay, so if I'm doing the math, okay, so you said there's 160 plus or minus total. We've got 111 about done, you got about 21 that you could do quickly now, south of 163rd Street, that would be 130 plus or minus. So we're about 70% of the way through the project.
You know, yes, something I think is a little north of 70, but just about that.
Okay.
The most diff-
75.
Yet to encounter will be 163rd North to 175th, where if you look, those are the old Cobra head lights which are installed on poles. There are a few lights, there's seven lights that won't be able to be installed until the physical overhead facilities are removed because we're going to avoid these conflicts that it required spread footings. And we're gonna literally, when FPL takes a pole out, set a streetlight foundation in their hole. We know it's clear, they could have their pole there if there's a water line in the way. So we'll be done with the exception of seven poles as soon as FPL can de- de-energize for us.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay. We go on to item 10J.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we need a a motion and a second?
Oh, 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 I thought we did, oh, I'm sorry, this is for Roll, I was thinking of Paul, okay. Um for item 10H, could I, could I have a motion?
I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, change order is approved, thank you, Paul. Item 10J. Good night, Paul.
Okay, 10J is a resolution adopting rules of procedure for hybrid meeting of the city commission and city boards that take place through independency of the state of emergency due to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. This is a timely topic, Chris? Oh, I'm sorry, Ed, not Chris, yep.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As we've discussed on several occasions, the Attorney General has a, has several opinions out there that provides that in order to have a valid city commission meeting, at least a quorum of the members must be present uh at, at the uh, at the meeting place. The governor has suspended that during, uh from uh March through the end of this month. But starting November 1, uh we're going to have to have at least the majority of you present in order to conduct a valid meeting. So everything else is going to remain the same, everybody else is gonna participate by Zoom. You're going to participate by Zoom, but at least three of you will be in chambers. The public will be able to participate the way they've been participating, which I think has been very convenient for them. They've had an opportunity to discuss every topic that that comes before you. So we're just implementing these rules uh with the new uh reality that the governor's not going to extend that any further.
Got it, thank you, Ed. So we had um, we basically almost had a fire drill for this month because the governor extended it on, I think the last day of, it was, I think it was September 30th, if I'm not mistaken. It was literally the day it was going to expire, he extended it, but we didn't know he was going to extend it. So I had a number of conversations with the city attorney and the city manager on how, on how we could, we could, you know, physically and virtually um conduct ourselves going forward. So um you know, it's our feeling that um we're better off, again, for the foreseeable future with virtual meetings. But in order to comply, we're gonna likely have to have some of us in chambers properly distanced, and that's how we're gonna do it. So this, this ordinance basically cleans that up and gives us the authority to make that happen and still comply with the um, with with the rules of the state. So um, any questions?
I guess I, I just like a clarification uh on the um, on the public's participation. So that's not hybrid, I mean, they can remain participating the way they are now, but they would not be able to be in chambers if they wanted.
No.
That's correct.
They are not going to be able to come into chambers, uh it's closed other than to uh the commission. And if, if the city manager wants to be there, or if he has some of his staff that wants to be there, but the way it was set up was that they would all participate uh virtually as well.
Right, and we think it's cleaner that way, it's, it just makes a lot more sense, it's safer for everybody. And you know, we don't have any issues, so you know, so I think Ed, I think Ed worked out a good, a good balance here. And I think, I think we're gonna see more cities, you know, basically taking the same, take, you know, taking the same position. And it's kind of a, just a means to an end based on, you know, where we're landing at the state level. So um and frankly, I I feel we've gotten more participation by the virtual meetings anyway. So I think the public has responded to it well. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Mauricio, any public comment on this one?
No, Mayor, not for this.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve item 10J. Second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, okay, motion carries. Thank you, so we have three add-on items, which is um the first one being item 10K.
Mayor, we're going to combine all three of them since they're all related.
Great, that, that makes it easy. So we're gonna combine item 10K, 10L and 10M, Mauricio, you want to read them into the record?
10K is a resolution awarding invitation to bid number 2008012 and approving an agreement with VisualScape Inc. to provide landscaping services for city parks and recreational facilities, option A. 10L is a resolution awarding invitation to bid number 2008012 and approving an agreement with Brightview Landscaping Services Inc. as a primary awardee to provide citywide landscaping services, option B. And 10L is a resolution awarding invitation to bid number 2008012 and approving an agreement with VisualScape Inc. as the secondary awardee to provide citywide landscaping services, option B.
Honorable Mayor and-
Chris, Susan, sorry.
So this is a little cumbersome. We issued bid number 20 dash 08 dash 1, uh 01 for landscape services because we lost our landscape service provider that was doing parks only. So we have two landscape service providers, parks and right of ways. The parks did not renew, so we went back out to bid, we gave two options. One was to bid on just parks and one was to bid on option B, which was citywide, both parks and right of ways. After a thorough review of all of the bids, VisualScape came out to be the most responsive, the, the least expensive, the most responsive responsible bidder for parks only. And at this time, that is the direction we'd like to go in, we'd like to keep um Brightview as our contractor for right of ways and um contract with VisualScape for um parks and facilities, recreational facilities. The option B is that if either of these companies default, we do not have to go back out to bid, we can then give them a notice to proceed for the citywide landscape services for the one that has not defaulted.
Susan, is it, is it two different areas of expertise? Because you'd think that, you'd think that once they're in the city and they man the job, that they would want to cross pollinate and you'd get economies of scale. But is it, is it, is it two types of, is, I guess, is it two types of apparatus to do parks versus right of way?
There is um some level of detail that is required for like the, the soccer fields, the um, the athletic fields, the, the, the wear and share on that is different, the Collins Avenue is, is a little different. But we used to have one contractor for absolutely everything, there is an economy of scale, but there is also then um, you know, maybe not getting the best product. So we really-
I got it.
Need the high quality work, um and the attention to detail in both areas. And we found that lacking when we had it all together.
Understood, okay.
But that is why we did option B, in case we wanted to-
Understood. Yeah, and then you have the fallback of cross pollinating if you need to, yeah. Any comments from the commission? Okay, I see public speaker, Mauricio?
Yes, Mayor, one second. Jerry Joseph, go ahead.
Yes, hello, so I have a question regarding um the property at North Bay Road and 185th Street. It's a triangle type property that has a city bench and a dog trash container. As to the ownership of that property, is the city own any of that property at all, where that bench is?
That is just a right of way and we, which technically the city owns the first 10 feet of everybody's yard. And the bench was placed there by the city.
I see, okay, so where the large um oak tree came down in the hurricane, that's not city property?
It is not.
Yeah, because it's an eyesore, and uh it would be nice if we were able to pull that out somehow and get a nice tree in there again.
Private property.
Private property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the city doesn't have anything to say about the stump being there the way it is?
Is the stump illegal?
We can, we can take a look at-
I don't think so.
See what the situation-
Yeah, yeah.
An eyesore.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, Jerry, yeah, I don't think the stumps are legal though, but anyway.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Any other comments, Mauricio?
No, Mayor, not for this.
Okay, public hearing's closed with that, I'll take a motion.
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, mo- thank you, motion carries. Okay, that is the end of our resolutions um tonight, and we have three discussion items. First being item 12A regarding the Police Athletic League, which is Commissioner Viscara.
So um obviously, this is just a discussion item, just to put it on the map, I um, I, I, the Police Athletic League is, is um something that I think um may fit uh for us right now, uh certainly worth considering, uh given that uh right now, we don't have um at Pelican Park, and Sylvia's here, maybe she can chime in afterwards. You know, we don't have full program the way that we used to. So there may be some room to uh bring in uh Police Athletic League uh at Pelican Park or in other um, or in some of our other facilities. And also, uh it, you know, it's a, just a, a great way to, to build community. It would open up opportunities for um, you know, the relationship building with the police department and and the community. But also, uh I see it as a, a good opportunity to increase some teen activities, which for a long time, you know, we were lacking, and I think um Sylvia has, has done a great job at in, at increasing the, the teen activities. But this might be a different window for it. And also, it's um, you know, it's, it's accessible. We take for granted, you know, we think, well, we have all these programs, but not everybody can afford them. So this might uh open up opportunities for other sectors of our community to participate in ways that, that they couldn't otherwise. I think it's something that we can look into, you know, start small um and um and build, and oh, my screen just went off, I hope you can still see me. And and build a, a, a better relationship, strengthening that relationship between the uh, the youth and the police department. the youth and the police department.
Sylvia?
Um, well, what I can say is that, um, we have been working on expanding teen programs. Um, and will continue to do so. We've been offering a virtual, uh, teen group during this time of COVID. Um, and we are looking at different ways that we can provide programming, um, after school. In the coming months, when we're able to reopen Pelican, um, but separate and apart from that, personally, I would say that I think the POW program would be a beneficial program. I think the key component about the POW program is fostering the relationship with, um, police officers. And I think that that's something that's always valuable in a community. And if it's something that we want to pursue, uh, our department would definitely be, um, willing to support however we can.
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Larissa.
Um, so for, for those that are not familiar with the program, uh, Commissioner Biscara, can you just clarify what exactly you think? Cause I, I was part of, you know, when I was, uh, in, at Feinberg, we had the POW program and it was great. They sponsored the patrols. They were very involved in the community. Uh, it was fantastic. But can you just clarify what exactly you're envisioning and, and what that means for?
Well, I, my understanding, you know, it's, it's, there's different kinds of programs. And so that's why I said, you know, it's, uh, cause I know that this requires, uh, a commitment from, from our departments. And so it's obviously something, you know, if we decide to look into it, it would absolutely have to include, uh, the input, uh, of, of the department. So, and for that reason, uh, and because it would be new here, I would, I would envision starting something small. A, a small program, um, with minimal, um, commitment from the police department. I, I don't know what sport would be best. I don't know what's most popular, but that's why I think I'm just proposing it as, as something exploratory. And if it's successful, uh, you know, we, then, then we grow it from there, or we add a, a different kind of program. Or we just keep it, uh, you know, to, to one activity or, or two, or, you know, grow one activity bigger, or you just have two smaller activities. But I, and my vision is, I'm an incrementalist in nature anyway for everything. Uh, and so I, I wouldn't, um, you're, you're asking me how I envision it. I don't envision a, a huge program and, and forcing something that A, we couldn't, that, that wouldn't ultimately be successful, or that would be a strain on, on the department. I, I think if we can cooperate, uh, with, um, with some staff, you know, through the, through, through the parks and our department, and if those relations of, relationships are already there, it would just be a, a new way to explore it and provide a, a new opportunity for, uh, some of our children who are already active. But also I think it opens it up to children who haven't, who haven't had that opportunity. So I like that part of it. And in an environment where you're, you know, like Bud mentioned earlier, you know, with a defund the police is, is something that's floating around out there. I know not here, but you know, out and about. I think anything that, that strengthens that relationship is healthy for us.
Yeah. So the only thing that I would caution is that whatever we do, it's got to fit into a post-COVID environment. Just because we're in a lull right now at Pelican, it's only because we're in COVID environment. And, you know, we couldn't start throwing programs in the Pelican because we have a little bit of a window of upper, you know. But I would just say that, you know, if you look at it, I would, I would just say, Jennifer, you know, work with Sylvia, like you said, figure out something small. But, but make sure it works post-COVID, you know, make sure it works when Sylvia is all cranked up again with her programs. Because, you know, it's all going to come roaring back eventually. Because the demand is, you know, who's been, always been astronomical for our, you know, a lot of our daily programs. So let's just see how it, you know, how it would fit in, how it would work and, you know, what, what, what would work in terms of, you know, weaving it in. But I, I completely agree that, you know, anything that, um, ingratiates the police to the community and the community to the police is a good thing. And, and we've got to also see if the department has the bandwidth, you know, to also, you know, be involved in it. And so, so again, I think it's great. I applaud the fact that you brought it up as exploratory in nature. And it's definitely germane to the community, you know, it's not, it's not something that's, you know, that's, that's, um, you know, esoteric or out there. So I would just say, you know, talk to Sylvia about it. She's usually got great ideas and, um, as well, and you can probably figure something out. So, so, um, so, sounds good.
Plus, I, I don't think she's busy enough, so.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Yeah, that's the problem. So, but you know, yeah. So, um, okay. Very good. Uh, any other questions from the commission or comments regarding, um, this discussion item? Okay. Um, we go on to item 12B.
Okay. So this is a, this is really, uh, the, as a consequence of the, uh, county commission's adoption of a, of, of an ordinance regulating the use and application of fertilizers. So my question, um, about this is, I mean, I think this is something that we've discussed in the past. And, um, I like a lot of, uh, I like a lot of, uh, aspects of this particular ordinance. Um, I have a few questions for, for Ed about this. Um, we do have a few, uh, septic tanks in our city. Or Chris, maybe you know about that. We have a few remaining ones. Do we have any remaining septic?
Um, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Cause there were a couple of lists.
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, in terms of the fertilizer, uh, ban here, or the, or at least the restriction on certain periods of time during the year, um, do we fall under the county umbrella? Because there's a provision in here that states, you know, incorporated and unincorporated, is this something that we, we would have to formally adopt an ordinance? Or do we fall within this umbrella and we just have to implement it per the county ordinance?
Commissioner, we, uh, we actually fall within this ordinance that Miami Dade passed on first reading last week. And, uh, it, it allows the city to enforce those provisions. And if the city doesn't enforce it, it allows the county to come in and enforce it. So we really don't need our own separate ordinance in order to enforce these provisions.
So at this point, would it be, because it does affect the single family, the residential areas, correct? And this is about, uh, you know, the ba, the banning of the use of fertilizers during certain periods of, periods of the year. And also, you know, applications and so forth. So it would affect the residences and it would also affect the, the common areas of some of these condos, right? So.
But it certainly would affect the condos. I'm not certain that it's going to affect individual residents fertilizing. I'll have to check on that and get back to you.
So it would be, it, will the county be putting out an educational, uh, uh, platform or program? Or is this something that they will delegate that to the, to the municipalities?
No, part, part of the ordinance is to, uh, have them do a campaign to educate the public, you know, about the use of fertilizers and when they're banned and when they're not banned.
Okay. So we would expect, once this goes through a second reading and implementation, that we will have adherence and, uh, you know, some measure of, uh, uh, education and resources and compliance with this.
Yeah. Once, once the county goes ahead and adopts it, uh, we'll get with code enforcement to make sure and stand, you know, to make sure that, um, that his code enforcement officers understand what the requirements are. So they'll be up to speed and be able to, uh, make sure that it's being enforced.
Okay. I think it's great. I'm really happy to see this. This was spearheaded by, uh, a, a county commissioner. And, uh, I'm certainly, uh, very pleased. Obviously we're all aware of the fish kill and all the problems that we're having with our waterways. And, uh, um, I think this is a great advancement and, uh, important, and, and important adoption of an ordinance. So just wanted to bring it out there.
Okay.
That's it.
Um, okay. Um, any comments from the commission? So, so basically it is what it is. I mean, the county's adopting it and there's nothing for us to do. So, um, and, you know, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll just, when, when it gets handed down, you know, we'll interpret with, with the hand of. You got a couple, Mauricio, we have a couple of public comments on the discussion item?
Yes, Mayor. We have, um, Rumi. Rumi, go ahead. Your name and address for the record, please.
220 186th Street, Rumiana Guzdanova.
Go ahead.
That's make me very, for me, what Dana Goldman come up again with something like surprise, what surprise? What is the fertilizer? What is gonna be? What we have to do? Have a more, more important things to think about. I have a question to Dana. Because for the houses, for the apartment is different. I want to know. For example, now the sign, everybody, I want to ask, probably the attorney is gonna tell me. If he's right, the house is empty. The owner is two, three years is out of country, is not occupied this house. Do you think Dana has a right to get to put the sign in this house when she never asked? Because nobody is there. Also, the house is for sale. And is for sale, nobody there. Have a sign, Dana. Another place. Okay. For me, Larissa called me and asked me, can I put the sign in your house in the front? Yes, of course. And she put it. But Dana, who asked to put the sign? And also I get on my car and I was around in the neighborhood. And I have even pictures because the court enforcement came the next day after the sign of Larissa was in the front. He came and he said, I have to remove. I said, why? Because you don't have a 10 feet. 10 feet? He measured 10 feet. He moved it with one feet because to be 10 feet, okay. But after that, I said to him, are you going to all the street? Yes, that's what I'm doing. I was, was after him. Nothing was done on the other street with the sign next to the mailbox.
Thirty, thirty seconds, Rumi.
Okay, almost done. And I want to say, I need some people to go around and see how many empty houses. Because the homeless start to go in the area and have somebody to look the house empty. Horrible condition outside. Nobody has to give them penalty. I think it has to be somebody going around. That has to be done because.
Okay. Thank you, Rumi. Um, so well, well, I think the manager heard your comments regarding the homeless. And we, campaign season, we always get a lot of issues over signs, you know? There's, sometimes there's two signs in a yard, sometimes, but bottom line is, if your sign is the right size, you can have one sign for property if it's on the property. It can't be in the right of way. It's got to be on the property. So when there's two signs and it gets reported, then there's a warning and there's a process that everybody goes through. So, um, but usually to your point, you call the homeowner, you ask permission. It's usually people you know, if it's in a single family neighborhood, and then the signs go up and, and that's how it works. And the signs around the city, the larger signs, it's very, there's a strict code on how many square feet they can be. And we all know that code very well when we've campaigned. So, um, but, um, but code enforcement's pretty active regarding the signs when they get, when they get calls on them. So if you think something's illegal, you tell code enforcement and they check it out. Okay, Mauricio, keep going.
Hello, Jerry Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road, regarding the spraying of fertilizers and weed killers and such. We have several neighbors, um, that, uh, every two to three weeks throughout the year, they spray, uh, weed killers or I guess, uh, slugs or whatever they have in their lawn. Fertilizers, uh, weed killers, uh, bug killers, um, on a windy day. And you can't walk outside when they're spraying. They spray from large fat trucks come around. And is there any way to put a stop to that? I mean, all, all of these chemicals have been found to be death.
Yeah. Sure. Sure, Jerry. So with the county ordinance, we're going to find out what we get handed. So we're going to get the county ordinance. Um, the city attorney is going to interpret it. It'll go through. There'll be an education process. There'll probably be something that goes out to the public that says what you can and can't do. And then it'll be in code enforcement's hands.
Okay. Just, uh, can Jody add one, um, statement?
Of course.
Yeah, but just, you know, actually it's really harmful. And actually my father died from pesticides, period. That's on his death certificate. It's unfortunate leukemia lymphoma. It's more prevalent in males. So it's not a joke. You just don't know if you have the gene or not. So really, anything that harmful, and we're trying to say that we're eco-friendly, would, you know, we're contradicting ourselves. I understand some people want, I mean, I don't use pesticides. My lawn isn't that bad. But why can't we ban anything that's so harmful to the animals, to, to, to human beings, to, you know, to everything? And if people insist on using, you know, fertilizer, there's got to be organic fertilizer out there. Is that a possibility to look into?
Well, I think that's what we're seeing on a regional basis. I think that's the whole point. And I think that's, that's, that's why Commissioner Goldman brought it forward. On a regional basis, there's going to be severe restrictions on fertilizers. So, and it's making its way through the county and ultimately, so it's great. It's not just, it wouldn't just be our little one square mile of landmass. It'll be the entire county, which is even better.
Encompass weed killers as well, you think?
I don't know. I, I, I haven't seen it yet. So let's, so we have to see, um, we have to, we have to get the, we have to get, the ordinance has only been first reading on the county. So we have to see the ordinance. We have to see what gets through second reading. It'll get interpreted it. It'll get, it'll get, um, and, and there'll be an informational package put out because it affects a lot of people, obviously.
Yeah, and all that washes into the waterways as well.
Correct, correct. So, yeah, yeah. I don't think we're, I don't think any of us are arguing. Yeah. So. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry and Jody. Um, okay. Um, that is discussion item 12B. And we're going to move on to discussion item 12C, Commissioner Lama.
Yeah, good evening. So this resolution had with the, uh, working definition of antisemitism. It came from the, um, International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance via the Miami Dade County Chiefs, which, uh, I'm a representative, uh, of the city with them. And, um, you know, when talking to Ed and we're looking at this, uh, resolution, a lot of the language that, you know, basically states what the work definition of antisemitism is, you know, and helping as an educational tool for, for the city and even for law enforcement to put this, uh, you know, to enforce some of the antisemitism that unfortunately we have seen, uh, lately a spike on. And, you know, a lot of the language is already in our code, in our city code. So I would say about 80% of that language that is in the resolution is in our code. So basically the discussion I had with Ed is that, um, we take what, what, what is missing from our code or the language that is in this resolution and incorporate it into, into our code. So basically what we would, the next step would be to, to have Ed work on, um, amending our code. So we can include this language and we have a more robust, uh, code. So we're looking into, you know, bringing it to the, uh, commission in November during our next meeting.
That's great. I think it's great. So, so just for the record, I used to be the only Gentile on the commission. And I was the youngest commissioner. Now I'm the oldest and, and now we have, now we have Jews and Gentiles. So, but in any case, um, antisemitism, I think is something that we've always, you know, I mean, we have, we have our BDS ordinance. We have, um, you know, it's something that we've always stood behind as a community. So, um, you know, and, and I think we've got, um, like, like you said, a lot of our, a lot of our language already reflects, um, uh, you know, you know, a lot of the, the conventional language that's out there. But if we're, you know, if we're lacking in some way and you've got additional clarity here, let's beef it up. No issue.
This will give us more clarity. And I think there's, uh, some illustrations and, uh, some language that would make our code, uh, stronger.
Yeah, that's great. So, um, so, um, okay. Um, any other comments regarding that?
I think it's great.
Public speaker. Okay. Mauricio?
Jerry Joseph, um, 18560 North Bay Road. Yeah, I would just say that unfortunately, in this circumstance, you have a lot of language from, uh, different areas that you would be able to pull from.
Yeah, I would just say that unfortunately, in this circumstance, you have a lot of language from uh, different areas that you would be able to pull from.
Right, right. That's why, you know, when the league puts stuff together, to Alex's point, the league is usually pretty good about knowing, you know, what kinda works universally. And so a lot of times with these types of things, you know, we do rely upon the league. Because what's nice is most cities then tend to follow the league's recommendation. And then we're consistent on our adoption of a lot of this kind of stuff. So to your point, Jerry, there is a lot of, you know, it comes out here from different directions and different organizations. But I think Alex is well-served in bringing the recommendation of the legal cities forward.
Thank you, Alex. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, okay, um, Mauricio, what else we have?
Mayor, that's it.
That's it.
That's all we have.
Okay, all, okay, um, I'd like to, the, the one thing I wanna say is, support our local businesses. Eat out, order takeout, whatever, but support our local businesses. They got hammered the last six months, okay? And you know, our restaurants are just coming back and the curfews, you know, the curfew's been eking its way up to, up to midnight. But the bottom line is, you know, I talk to our local business owners all the time and, you know, and um, they, they, they need our support now more than ever. I think I did a, I did a, um, a piece for the newsletter on this just recently and I just wanna reiterate it to everybody. Um, you know, please, you know, um, support our local businesses and our restaurants and, you know, and let's show them as a community that we want them to, to, to stay here. It's been great. I think it's Google are the ones that are doing these ads about staying local, you know, and um, and I, and I'm, I'm really a big proponent of that. It's just ironic that a global, a global tech company is telling us to, to stay local, but that's, you know, that's another discussion. Um, but um, but in any case, um, but let's, you know, we, we, we got great restaurants in the city, great local businesses and, you know, let's as a community support them. We want them to survive. And um, they're just starting to come back. And you know, I do get a concern that if we do get a relapse of, you know, COVID, that, that, that some of these restrictions may get rolled back again. I don't wanna see that, but it may happen. But in any case, let's continue to do that. So I wanna thank everybody um, for attending and um, we will see you, yes?
Citizens Forum.
Ed. Citizens Okay, do, 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 okay, do we have anybody for citizens forum? That's what I asked for.
That's what I meant by nothing else. We had no, no
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 that, yeah, that was my interpretation too. So um, okay, with that, we'll see everybody in November. Um, and um,
Alex wants to.
Alex, shoot.
Please remember to vote. If you intend on mailing your, your ballots, mail them by tomorrow, please. Uh, if not, if you wanna drop them off, uh, you could drop them off at the Aventura Public Library. Or if you wanna go vote in person, vote in person, wear a mask and follow the guidelines. But yeah, please vote.
Like, great, 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 great addition, cause I should
And I just want to, um, want to thank myself.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I, and I also, I wanted to give a, a, a pat on the back to our students and our teachers and the parents that we've uh, you know, we went back to school and we've gone through all this transition. I think uh, it's amazing what, what uh, what, what the teachers are managing to do uh, under these uh, situations. I get to witness it a lot more. And, and I think our, our kids have um, you know, they've, they've done very well, you know, through all of this change. And I think, you know, they need to be recognized also.
Excellent. So thank you, you know, thank you to our teachers. And um, as Alex said, it, it is election season. So um, when we, when we see each other next time, hopefully we'll have picked the, you know, we'll have picked the new president and we'll see where we land on our own local elections as well. So, um, okay, thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye bye.